Are you ready, Sharon? We're going to call the meeting of Board Supervisors back to order. Ready, folks? We're now on item, let me get where I am here. Item 26 Alpha. This is with respect to potential extension of the building. Oh, wait a minute. Hang on, Kim. We're going to do public comment first. I know the art folks want a public comment.
I'm Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative, and I want to introduce the new exhibition here in the Sierra Room. It's by Susan Church, "She's the Welder," and Stephen Reed. Susan's from a ranch east of Elko that her grandfather, I think, homesteaded. Stephen Reed's from Dayton. He does the watercolors. When we curated this, we weren't quite sure how the welding and the watercolors would go together, but now that the work is up in the room, we're just totally thrilled with them. These two pieces back there, the framed one and the round one, his was done in 1999, I think in Japan, and hers was done in 2016 in Elko. And they interact beautifully. They looked like they were done sitting next to each other. So take a moment to look. There's wall text back by the door if you want more details. And the show's up through the end of June. So thank you again for the space. Another show, we have art from WNC. Use that one? Is that better? Thank you. The art from WNC is up at the brick through April 12th. And then we're having another group show of high school work in the brick. And there's a reception on Tuesday, April 24th. And of course, everyone's invited. Okay, drum roll. Trumpets or something? Drum roll. I'm very proud to announce that CCAI received a Challenge America grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for our exhibition that's over at the courthouse. So those are highly competitive national grants, so we're thrilled.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a big deal.
We think so. Thank you very, very much. The essay that I passed out is for that exhibition. That show will be up to the end of May, right before Memorial Day. And we're thrilled also with the essay. Chris Lanier did a beautiful job, and we think it's a pretty, really good description of the show. And it gives a wonderful background of the artist. He grew up in Galveston, and that's really motivated a lot of the content in his art. So any questions?
Mr. Mayor? I don't know. We're not supposed to probably, but I just want to thank you for what you do for Carson City with the arts.
John, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the spaces and the walls. Thanks.
Well, it's wonderful. It's a good, nice way to do board meetings with art. Keeps a level head. All right. Now we'll move to 26 Alpha. This is possible extension of building permit number 1252 and associated fire permits for construction of the Ornsby House. Kim, did you want to say anything? Good afternoon to you.
Mr. Mayor and Supervisors, I just wanted to thank all of you for working with me over the past year and a half plus. After much consideration and speaking with the city engineer yesterday, we have decided not to move forward with extending the building permit. It's of no use to us at this point. We are done building. There's nothing else that we're going to be building. We haven't done anything since we laid the asphalt. Everybody that we are currently entertaining, they are going to make some type of change. So they're going to need to file for a new building permit anyway. So I just wanted to thank you. And I did bring Ted with me because we have, we said that we would give an update every three months, so Ted's here to give an update.
Well, thank you, Kim, very much. All right.
Hi. So as Kim was just saying, you know, really, this project's going to be an adaptive reuse type project. Most likely, it's not going to be, based on the feedback we're getting from potential buyers, it's not going to be the hotel casino it was originally intended to be. I don't know what that variation's going to be, but it will be some sort of mix of retail, housing, et cetera. So the great thing is, we have a ton of activity. We've had 46,000 views of the website. We've got at least a dozen active interested buyers right now. We're being very meticulous on vetting these people, these potential buyers now, as to not waste anybody's time and resources, as we've seen in the past. So I'm very positive on this project, and we will see some action here very soon.
Very good. And I think it's an accurate statement that, you know, what's been, the improvements that have been done there ought to have been inspected. So, you know, that's kind of, as to a building permit for those, those are already done. All right. All right. Well, you know, we appreciate you working with us. Let's keep going down the road and see what we can do. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Very good. All right. Ready to do the Unified Master Plan? Oh, you want public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, public comment. Come on up. I'm sorry. We're still, let's go back to the Ornsby House. Yeah.
Mayor, Board, yeah, just to be clear, I'm talking about our last agenda item, 26A. So that obviously was news that I wasn't expecting to hear. I guess my big concern here is one of the people that they're trying to market through, through the supporting materials that were provided to you, was a senior housing project. And it's zoned for a hotel casino. And I don't know, you know, that would be like me listing somebody's house and marketing it as a commercial building. I don't understand why that's even being entertained as a use, and I hope that that's not, you know. I know that there would be organized opposition to having something like that put into that building if that were to come up. So, you know, what I think would be a good thing to do at this point would be to form a committee of you guys, city staff, building owners, something to help this process along. Apparently, this building was an escrow at some point. I've had three people tell me, three different people who don't necessarily run in the same circles, that it was the city's fault that it fell out of escrow, because the city's hard to deal with. And I find that not to be true. I deal with the city all the time. I deal with them on a monthly basis with planning and building, and they're wonderful to work with. I have no issue with that. So the loser in all of this always ends up being the city. And the city's the one who gets the black eye. And our reputation as a city is the one who gets hurt as time passes by with being hard to work with or being difficult. And I think that, you know, that has to stop at some point. You know, there's lots of press and lots of articles, but never in there is there anything about, the city has nothing to do with why we're at where we're at today. I think that would be a helpful thing to be said. There's a study that I brought from 2001 in Philadelphia. And it says that homes that are located next to an abandoned or vacant property, obviously this one's not abandoned, but homes that are within 150 feet lose a value of $7,600. 300 feet, $6,800. 450 feet, $3,500. Go down the line. And that's in 2001. So I think you could conclude that those numbers are probably double at this point in time. You know, certainly higher than what this study indicated in 2001. You know, I don't come up here and do this because I'm running for office or because I'm doing anything other than the sort. I care because this, especially to see it not be a hotel casino, you know, I think that's obviously the highest and best use for it. The market will dictate some of those things. But yeah, I have a property that I own that's three blocks away from there now. And now my property value's affected because we keep going down the same road. So I would love to see the city do something to help, you know, whether they put someone in the business development office on, you know, trying to find different businesses that would go in there, find other opportunities, you know, to have someone, you know, make phone calls for two or four hours, you know, every other day, every three days, to maybe call some businesses, see what we can do about getting some of those in there. Hell, I'd do it. You know what I mean? But rather than doing the same thing over and over and over, I'd love to see a step made to put together some sort of consortium of people to come up with a solution for this thing and make that happen. And senior housing is not a viable option for that. Again, there would be organized opposition against something like that. So thank you for letting me say my piece. Appreciate it.
Okay. John, wait a second. Garrett, did you want to?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, Garrett. You say in the first place that some other use besides what you call highest and best use, hotel casino, doesn't meet with your view of what it should be, and there'd be rezoning, et cetera, et cetera. What would you have us do? I mean, you said, somebody get on the phone, market it. And then you talked about it being something else in the latter part of your statement. You just want it to sit vacant in the, or would you have it changed to something else rather than have it sit vacant?
If you're asking me if I'd rather have senior housing or vacant building?
No, I didn't ask that question. I asked you.
We're going down. I'm getting the red light on open meeting law stuff, so.
Well, I'm going to challenge that red light because this is on the topic that's before us, although there is, with the withdrawal of the requests, I suppose, nothing before us. But I just want to know what your thoughts are.
Fair enough. Yeah, like I said, if it's not going to be a hotel casino, that's fine. You know, do I think a building that could have retail and commercial space along with living there? Sure. But when the push for the city, and these are your words, not my words, that you're trying to get young families to come to this city, bring in more senior housing to the most, to the biggest and best property downtown, that's not even, shouldn't even be an option. It shouldn't even be talked about. You know, that's how I feel about that. But I guess my main point is, is you guys always like to push back on me. I'd love to see you push back on the property owner like you push back on me when I come up here and voice my opinions. That's the frustration I get when I walk out of here, is push back on them. Why me? Push back on them. Show them the same amount of whatever you have towards me, animosity for this. I've never disclosed this, but when I did the social media post three years ago, I was accosted on Nevada Day and threatened by one half of the ownership. So, you know, push back on them like you push back on me, and I think you may make some headway.
How do we push back? There's nothing before us.
Okay. Garrett, I think, you know, nobody's trying to push you back. I mean, this is public comment, and you're entitled to your viewpoints. So just know that. I mean, nobody's trying to tell you you can't, you shouldn't share your viewpoints with us. Nobody. All right. All right. Anybody, any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see anybody. All right. Are we ready to move then to the next item? Unified Pathways Master Plan? All right. Who's going to do it? Ms. Sullivan, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I'll make some brief comments to set up the framework on this, and I'll refer to the gentleman to my left. This request before you is an amendment to the master plan. The Board of Supervisors has the authority to amend the master plan. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The master plans are officially adopted document that outlines Carson City's vision and goals for the future. The Unified Pathways Master Plan, or UPMC, is a part of the master plan. The UPMC is a comprehensive plan for non-automobile travel routes in and around Carson. The pathways in the plan include trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, off-street multi-use trails, and an aquatic trail related to the Carson River. The proposed amendment will supplement the existing UPMC by adding language and graphics related to non-motorized, single-track trail systems. Again, the applicant has an in-depth presentation, so I will not go in depth on the application. Having said that, I will mention that when considering amending the master plan, there are four findings to be considered: consistency with the master plan, compatible land uses, response to change conditions, and the desired pattern of growth. On December 18, 2017, the Open Space Advisory Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission reviewed the proposed amendments and recommended adoption with minor changes. The documents before you today incorporates those minor changes. On February 28, 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed the requests before you and adopted Resolution 2018 PCR2, recommending approval by a vote of seven to zero. And with that, I will refer to my colleagues from Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. For the record, Vern Cron, Senior Park Planner. And this presentation is going to be a tag-team effort. I have to my left Greg Bergeren. He is our Trails Coordinator. He will be identifying for the Board the details of the changes to the plan. And further down the table are Mark Kimbrough and Jeff Potter with the Eagle Valley Trails Committee. And they will be discussing kind of how we've reached this point, give you some background on how the Eagle Valley Trail Committee came together, the yeoman's work that they did for the city, and just their group and what they've done to make this plan possible. So with that, just for some background, just for some background for not only the Board but the public, the Unified Pathway Master Plan was adopted in 2006. It was part of the overall comprehensive master plan that was completed for the city at that time. With that, a year later, we revised the plan with the addition of the aquatic trail, which identified different amenities and policies related to the Carson River and using the river itself as an actual means of recreation. So that was amended. So these amendments that we're talking about today is something that we've done before with the UPMC. And what we're looking at is when we did those plans back in 2006 and 2017, we did not specifically address the single-track trails in our urban interface areas and our rural areas. And so that's what we're really going to talk about today. The UPMC has been an excellent planning document for staff to use over the years, and we're really looking forward to adding this new component to it as well. Basically, since 2007, the demand for non-motorized, single-track trails have been increasing. Many of our residents have been asking for them. As you can see in the photograph, we're talking about soft trails, trails that are anywhere from 18 inches to 30 inches wide that are in your rural interface areas that basically work toward running, hiking, equestrian uses, horseback riding, and mountain biking. So that's what we're talking about in the document and developing the path system for that. The Cultural and Tourism Authority recognizes the importance of the outdoor recreation and basically since 2013 has been changing its market focus so that we're, that they've been introducing our trail and path systems to the world, if you will. I know that's a little bit of a cliche, but we are definitely on the map because of the Carson City Off-Road and what our trail system is evolving into. So we're really excited to actually put this into the plan moving forward. Just some statistics for you. Since 2013, Carson City has seen a 68% increase in hotel room revenue, and the Convention and Tourism Authority recognized that correlation. In 2017, as all of us know, the Carson City Off-Road was here, and that generated almost $2.1 million worth of impact to our economy. So this type of a trail system definitely has an economic driver to it. And so having the plan to be able to help implement this further along and to really turn our trail system into a world-class facility, I really think is an important step at this particular time. Also, what's interesting, evidence shows that snow conditions reduced the number of skiable days at Tahoe, and some of those recreationists can be attracted to Carson City to bike and hike our trails. So I really do think this is a great opportunity for Carson City and a very needed part of the planning process. So with that, I'd like to let Jeff and Mark chat a little bit about where we came from and how we got here.
Where we came from?
Yeah, where you came from, where we came from, where you guys started from back in 2013.
Back in, so what a pleasure to be here. And I was exciting this morning, and Jeff came running up to me after we had our first celebration today with looking at the ham property before we even presented the plan. So we're very excited about that. Thank you for that. So they've taken 15 slides that I used before and put it into one. So I'm trying, I have this tendency to talk too much, but I'll work very hard because I know how the mayor likes to keep it brief. And so, well, Brad, too, I sit on the board with those two. The history of this, so what I want to do is talk for a second. On the ham property, that was the catalyst that brought this whole plan forward. My open space hero, Juan Guzman, hired me back in 2012 to go out and look at the trails because tourism and muscle power in the community wanted a trail map. Even the mayor, I think, was asking for a trail map. So I went out with a GPS and shot all this and mapped it and found out that a good percentage of it's all private property, the public's been using for years. And what I was really impressed with was the construction of the trails was perfect. It was absolutely perfect trails up there. So it was really nice to see that. But you can't put private property on a map and hand it out to the public. That's a big no-no. So, and working with Jeff, who's the pipe piper of this group, he's the one that brought everybody into the game here. So we were past the baton. I get to be a spokesman, but there's a lot of people involved with this, over four or five years of working this out. So that brought us all together with the thought that you really need to develop a plan before we just look at one piece of the trail, this one over here, or the ham property's wrong, so let's deal with that. And I had been active with another group called the Sierra Front Recreation Coalition, had the Forest Service, the heads of the three big forests in this region. They were all concerned about the Sierra Front being locked out so people couldn't get into the Sierras. We're spoiled in Nevada with 86% public. Everybody thinks everything goes public, and a lot of the Sierra Front's private. So the plan was started, we put together in the process, and Juan and myself and Roger sat down, and I became kind of a facilitator at the beginning of this process to develop this plan for the big picture of all trails. And the volunteers came in the place, and you can see on the bottom, all those, I didn't put all these logos in, but a lot of these folks financially supported or gave time, expertise. We had a GIS person, Toby Welburn, that did all of the GIS work. Lynn Zong from RCI did a lot of the editing, most of the editing. There's a question groups are all involved and gave money from each of the groups to support this, and we had open space support. And so we started to become more of a formal group. And to do that, you had to collaborate with all these groups. Trails are kind of unique. You got, it's only 24 inches wide, but they go through different properties, they go through different landscapes, places you can't go, you got ocean, not ocean, the historical values, and there's a lot of that, and the foothills. All these things come into place. You got to work with a lot of people. And then we worked with the public to make sure we were doing good. And today, you'll notice, I'm glad to see that you don't have 100 private landowners in here, working, concerned because we're talking about land use control in this front that will have some impact on the future, minimal, we consider. I've been active with a couple of the groups and seen this plan, the UPMC that we keep talking about, use the word pathway. I was involved on the planning commission that came through. Usually, you have transportation, you have recreation, there's soft and hard trails, the hard trails are the paved. Transportation has to do plans every five years. The soft trails don't. Those are recreational, and you just kind of put a plan out there and work on it piece by piece. So in the year they did the UPMC, they actually allowed the word pathway, and they started putting soft trails in there. But all they did in the UPMC was say, put an arrow and say, get a group of volunteers and have them inventory and work on the plan. So the UPMC actually drove a lot of what we did and got. When we put all this stuff together, we put a website together, we put all these things that made this a formal group to bring back and get some work done. It's all grassroots. So I am, and then Joel Dunn played a big role because he knew the importance of this trail to this community, and that paid off in dividends with this group. So I just wanted to say that. So what this does is when you get this developed, I know they just pushed a slide past me because I didn't get me, but I want to make one more point. Sorry.
That was almost a hook.
That's right. They didn't, so they didn't, yeah, they didn't give me the hook. So what this does, and now we don't want this to happen, there's been some situations where if there's a developer on the front and you want to get through the Sierras, they'll say, okay, we'll give them an easement. And there's a case in Douglas County, they gave them a 10-foot wide easement straight up the hill. And so there's your easement. So you couldn't build a trail, or you, I've worked with, so this plan shows a spec, gives us more latitude to build a trail that's sustainable to get them through these properties. And it's all grassroots, and all these people, we got the blessing from all these agents to move this forward, and they worked with us through the whole process. And I'm done with my slide because Jeff has a few more things to say. But I do want to thank Hope and Jen because they brought this forward for us after all these years. Without them, this would not have come forward. So that's important. Thank you.
For the record, Jeff Potter. And before I get going, I want to say that working with the city is only rainbows and unicorns. Okay? And so Mark obviously played a big role in this, and I think he really painted the picture of what you have before you. For my role in this, what we did is, we got, what we have first, we have about 45 miles of single track in Carson City. Only about roughly 17 miles of those are authorized as single track. The rest of those are what we call social trails. And so what we did is, we took our center volunteers out, asked for our trail users to send us data on what was out there. And so we mapped those and then sent volunteers out to evaluate those trails as sustainable trails. And basically, what a sustainable trail is, the easy thing to description is, keep the water off the trail. And once, because erosion's going to kill it. So we went and did that, through our evaluations, we then figured out what was sustainable, what wasn't, and then we put those on a map, matched those with the UPMC to make sure that we didn't have any duplicate or possibly rearrange those to make it more ground truth. And UPMC would reflect what was on the ground. And once we did that, we brought those to public meetings. We had three public meetings, one with agencies and the rest with, open to the public. And they came in and gave us their input. And along with that, we also had public surveys online that, you know, we got the public's feedback. And all that, I believe, is in your packet, as the Eagle Valley Trail Committee report. Once we compiled all that information, our experts got together, experts, I wasn't one of them, it was Lynn Zong and Mark Kimbrough and Toby Welborn and Donna Inversen that all really did a fantastic job compiling that information into the report. And once we had that, we moved it forward to, you know, presented to the agencies and the city, to see, or Open Space and Parks and Rec, so they could see what we had, what we came up with. And then Jen and Hope moved this forward to you, as Mark said. And one of the things that we're very proud of is, and thank you again, Hope, for you nominated us, and could you move the next slide? Please, thanks. Is we won this award for Outstanding Rural Plan, and that's a huge achievement. Thank you.
Okay. So Greg Bergeren, Trails Coordinator. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. I would like to walk you through each of our proposed amendments. And as we go, if the Board has questions, please feel free to just interrupt me and ask. So the First Amendment is to Chapter 9, Off-Street Trails. And we added a subsection 9.2.1, which is to add a trail difficulty rating system. And the reason we did that is, people are asking for that. It makes it easier for them to match trails to their skill level and helps them to have informed, make informed decisions when they're looking for trails to utilize. Okay. And then we go to Chapter 11, Implementation, and which is increasing off-street unpaved single-track opportunities. And in Paragraph 1, we added, we added some information, a brief history of the Eagle Valley Trail Committee. We felt that was important for context because of all the work that they did do to bring this forward. And then in Chapter 2, or rather, Paragraph 2, we recommended several references that will be used as standards for our trail design and construction. And the references that we cite, we chose because they emphasize all of our basic principles, which are to promote safety, to protect natural resources, to design trails that are fun, interesting, and attractive for a variety of users, and to be sustainable for the long term. And the, making trails that are fun, interesting, and attractive... And the making trails that are fun, interesting, and attractive is what's going to be really important about this because we do want to attract people to come to our community to utilize these trails. Okay. Oh, and then, also in Chapter 11, most importantly, we list the specific recommendations for the trails. And those are listed in two tiers, Tier 1 and Tier 2. And that is based on the recommendations of the, or the scoring criteria from the Eagle Valley Trail Committee. And that's based primarily on the public input that they solicited during their process. Okay, so continuing on in Chapter 11, we amended subsection 11.2.5, which explains that volunteers are critical to what we do. And just as a side note, last year, we had more than 150 volunteers that donated in excess of 1,800 hours working on single-track trails, and that's a value to Carson City of about $40,000. And so, then, we also corrected a typo on subsection 11.2.6. There were two of those subsections. So, we deleted the one that referred to the Tahoe Rim Trail Association because it was made redundant by the rewrite of 11.2.5. And then, lastly, in Chapter 11, we added subsection 11.2.10, which was to explain the importance of partnering with adjacent counties to accomplish regional connectivity. Ultimately, we want to have trails that connect to Washoe County, to Douglas County, to Story County, and to Lyon County. And their regional connectivity or system of trails is going to be very important to what we're doing. Okay. All right. And then, in Chapter 12, Policies and Actions, we revised the UPMP maps. And there are four maps in there in the Chapter 12. One of them is an overview, and then, there's three detailed maps. And we changed just two things on those maps. One is, we updated the land ownership to make that relevant to what's actually current today. And then, the other thing is, of course, we updated the single-track trails. And those are highlighted in orange. And the solid trails are the ones that are existing legal trails, and the ones that are dashed lines are the ones that we propose to develop and bring into the system. Okay. All right. And then, lastly, we added an amendment to the appendix, which was just simply to add the public comments from all of the workshops and online surveys that were conducted by the Eagle Valley Trail Committee. And then, as Hope previously mentioned, these amendments were already unanimously approved by both the Open Space Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission and by the Planning Commission. But, I wanted to mention that prior to doing that, we sent out a courtesy notification to property owners, and we got no negative feedback. We did get some, actually, it generated some positive discussions about easements and things like that. So, we are hopeful that the board will unanimously approve our amendments. Thank you very much. Oh, are there any questions?
Yeah, we do.
I have no problem with any of the amendments that you have made. The question that I have is, because so much hard volunteer effort has gone into this, what are we going to do about folks being irresponsible about their dogs on these trails, leaving the waste behind? The message, obviously, as it's posted now, is not working. So, it's time to think about a different way of doing that. And I don't know if that message should be. These trails are the result of a unified volunteer effort. Don't spoil them with your dog's waste. I, you know, I don't know. But, something needs to be done because it's getting to the point where, I mean, you can contaminate your water supply with leaving so much waste behind. It is, and with the canine flu going on right now, it's also a very volatile virus. And it's just, we need to take better care of these trails going forward.
I can speak to that. We have, we're... Parks and Recreation, the Open Space Department, is just finishing up a new signage master plan. And as we start implementing the new signage, I think we can incorporate some of those messages into that. And I think that the messages will be more powerful because they'll be on a very consistent and very attractive sign that we're hopefully, hopefully will inspire more ownership in what we're doing. So, I hope that that could make a difference.
I echo what Karen just said. I'm a dog owner, and I follow that dog around with bags. And I think everyone should. So, I hope you can make that signage. But, it's really a problem because there are just people who don't care and don't pay attention. So, I know that resources are short, but is there any way to police that? Because it's a lot of trails and a lot of dogs.
Can I jump in? If you don't mind. Okay. So, I don't know... Karen and I had spoke about it, and what I've talked to our information management officer about is doing a social media and a public relations campaign. It is going to be very difficult. I mean, we have two rangers to patrol all of our open space and all of our trails is going to be difficult. I mean, to the extent that we can, we will. And certainly, in the busiest areas that have the most use, we can give them more attention. But, I think we really need to make people aware of the impact that not picking up after their dog has on the environment. I mean, I live up in Lakeview, and obviously, when you get off, when you get off the main trails, the dogs can really have a negative effect if they're not picked up after. So, I think step one is, yes, we need to, we need to put out the signage, and we need to step up the enforcement. But, I think we need to raise awareness, more important than anything else, so people understand exactly what they're doing when they don't pick up after their dogs.
Would policy raising penalties help at all?
Well, certainly wouldn't hurt. I mean, I'll defer to the folks who are the experts here. And here's one right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Supervisors, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. It's funny that you bring this up because we were actually discussing with our AmeriCorps staff last week about doing some potential stories. You've seen a lot on our websites right now. We have a PR and marketing AmeriCorps Vista volunteer who's done amazing things for us in helping get messages out. And this is one of the messages that we want to help educate the public on. I always like to educate first and do enforcement last. So, that way, we can, you know, on a good note, educate people, and then, hopefully, they'll tell their friend, and then, it goes down the line. But, like Greg said, it's part of signage, it's part of enforcement. We only do have two rangers for over 8,000 acres. They can't be everywhere. It's difficult. So, the best real enforcement is honestly peer pressure among citizens. So, when you see someone making that mistake, you know, correct them on it, ask them to pick it up. And also, we provide a significant investment in mutt make containers throughout this entire community. You wouldn't believe how expensive it is. We do provide the resources for people to be able to pick up after their pets. So, that shouldn't be an excuse. Take some extra bags with you, take your grocery bags. There's a lot of things we can help encourage people to do, and I think the city manager is correct. We can get some good public information out there to help educate people.
Okay. Can I just say also, after the questions, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this, particularly Jeff Potter, because a lot of work has gone in this. And I think that 40,000 estimate might be a little low. There's a lot of, you know, people who've worked up there who've given private time, but they were paid for it because they're paid well, and they're public, or they're in their private jobs or public jobs are worth more. So, thanks to everyone involved.
Anybody else? So, with the new trail locations, are we... Landowners are okay? We've worked on all that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as I said, we notify, we sent out a courtesy notification to landowners, and we didn't get any negative feedback. I got a few inquiries and then, but mostly, we got a couple of, a couple of landowners that started talking about potential for easements. And actually, that's how, that was how it came to be that we made the inquiry about the Hamm property because Mr. Hamm had called us asking about the, what we were doing with trails. So, I, we haven't heard any negative feedback whatsoever.
Can I add? Part of our process was send a letter to every private landowner that had a trail through it and only received one inquiry back, and that was a Hamm family. Everybody else, we couldn't, it was one of those that had to respond to stop. We wouldn't put it on the map if they didn't want it on the map, and the Hamm family asked for that. So, we just showed it, but not as a trail. So, we did a lot of upfront work with the private landowners because that's the big landmine that I've stepped on a couple of times with private land ownership. And any planning you're planning on doing, you better bring them into the group. So, I was very excited about that, and we were very successful of making sure we didn't have, like I said, the room filled up with private landowners here.
So, mine's more just a general question. I think it was Section 13 or Chapter 13 that I saw you were updating for maps? If I'm on the right, you took the... Okay, I'm on the right thing. So, I just have a general question. So, let's say we purchased the Hamm property, and then, those trails would go on. Does it have to come all the way back through to get a map amendment? Or can we, in our discussion here, just allow the maps to be updated every few years to accurately reflect the trails?
Well, the map is a planning document to show general locations where you want to put trails, but it's not necessarily that the trails need to be specifically on that exact GPS location. So, we can, we can... It's meant to be flexible enough that we can move trails if need be, and we can, I mean, the line, like I said, the lines there are, they're dotted and they're generic. So, we know we want to go from point A to point B. How we get there, we can, we can, we can work with that. And it's meant to be a dynamic, flexible document.
So, am I understanding that you wouldn't have to come back through an amendment to be able to just keep the maps updated? That's, the map won't be updated for 10 more years? That's what I'm getting at?
I mean, I suppose that somewhere in the future, I mean, an amendment, I suppose it could be necessary, but I think this document should be good to carry us.
Can I recommend one thing, Supervisor Bagwell? In your motion, or at least put on the record, that you authorize staff through the life of the, of the plan to make necessary graphical updates to the map. We will notify the board and will obviously notify the public when we make any, if we make any of those changes. And if we just have that on the record, there'll be no, no issue with that. And I think...
Yeah, I really like that because I think the public looks up our plans, uses them as guidance, and it's a document that, to me, as current as you can keep the maps, the better public information is there. So, I like that. Thanks.
Where are we in terms of connecting the trail with Douglas County?
That didn't look good. Okay, there's the answer. The son tells us the answer. Yeah.
So, could you state your name for the record, sir?
My name is still Juan Guzman. It hasn't changed. Hi, my name is Juan Guzman. I used to be the Carson City Open Space Manager. I am presently a volunteer with the Carson Valley Trails Association and Muscle Power, and it is my mission in line to complete that connection. We have, we, as in Carson Valley Trails Association and Muscle Power, have been talking to the state of Nevada about being able to do a transaction that will facilitate the ownership of land that will then allow for the construction of a trailhead. Then, if that happens, we anticipate using the underpass to be able to connect into Carson City and connect trails physically. But, at this point, the state of Nevada has not proceeded or has not come forth with a deal that we can all agree on. The state still wishes to increase the value of the land by changing the zoning and the master plan, which is an action that your board rejected two years ago now, just about. Yeah. So, we continue to discuss other alternatives. The most recent one was an NDOT easement, but that easement, however, wasn't, it was not suitable to accommodate a trailhead that we could live with, that everybody feels comfortable with, particularly your Public Works Department, because that side of the trail will be in Carson City lands, not in Douglas County lands. Meanwhile, there's some monies on the table towards the construction of the trailhead itself, and the bond expires in 2018. So, we have asked Douglas County if that can be, figure out a way of extending the life of the bond, the security bond, towards the subdivision. So, that, those $18,000 towards the construction of the trail will now go away. We will continue to work with Charlie Donahue, the State Lands Director, as well as with your son, the director of the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection towards the solution. By the way, your son has been very helpful in trying to reach a solution. I think that's what you were after, Mayor. Is that correct? Thank you.
The other thing, one of, you know, from the, from the underpass north, where was it, where were the, I don't see it on a map here. Where's the trail go from there to connect, to get into the, where does that happen?
I can answer that. We, we have a couple of possible connections, but we haven't, we haven't actually GPS'd an exact route yet. We're, it's kind of dependent upon not just the, you know, the connection that Juan was talking about, but there's other, there are other private property owners and the Forest Service that have property in that connection. So, there's, there's a number of things that have to be worked out before we can complete that trail.
Okay. Yep.
For the record, Ann Bollinger, Open Space Administrator. I will add to Juan's comments about working with State Lands and Douglas County. At the last Open Space Advisory Committee meeting, similar to the Hamm acquisition, it was on the agenda for the Open Space Advisory Committee to approve purchase of the full 100 acres owned by State Lands. Let me back up. About 14 months ago, I took an item to the Open Space Advisory Committee, and they approved me to move forward to purchase five or 10 acres just for a trailhead and a buffer. I took that to State Lands, and it was declined for the reason that it would possibly devalue the property. That's when State Lands came back and said, okay, what about working with NDOT for a trailhead kind of along the road and the right of way? Talking with actually several members of city staff, it was not really a safe alternative for us to have that along the road. So, then, I went back to the Open Space Advisory Committee for the potential acquisition of 100 acres. They did support that again unanimously. It is not on your agenda here because State Lands were disagreeing about the value and how to move forward and the whole question about rezoning right now.
Any other questions? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Yes, sir. Come on up.
I didn't say anything too insignificant.
Don't worry about it.
My name is Neil Oxford. I'm just a citizen of Carson City, and I've been listening to the proceedings. One of the things that caught my attention was the maintenance of the trails. And usually, when I want compliance with something I'm asking someone to do, I go to compliant people, people who are already in line with civics and citizenry, et cetera. Why not source the Boy and Girl Scouts for some of this maintenance? Make a connection more with them. They're in line with civics and civil service. And, you know, you had mentioned the significance of volunteerism in your environmental efforts. And...
Are you a trail user?
I am.
If you don't mind me asking, how long have you lived here?
I've lived in the area for 15 years. I've lived in Carson City for only four months.
How do you find it?
I like it very much.
Why, tell me, why do you like it?
Oh, not at all. I come from the east, actually the Midwest originally 15 years ago. The environment is very clean here. I, I enjoy the outdoors quite a bit and I tend to be conservative by nature, so it fits that as well.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks for letting me ask you those questions.
Where, where in the Midwest?
I'm from Indiana. Yes. Pardon me?
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? This golf, you're back there? All right. All right. Nobody, nobody else. All right. We should do a motion here then. Ready for motion? Who wants to do it?
I move to approve the master plan amendment to amend the unified pathways master plan to add a non-motorized single-track system based on the findings contained in the staff report to the Planning Commission and authorize the staff to appropriately update maps as necessary for chapter 13.
There's a motion and a second discussion on that motion. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? I don't, do we get that electronically? All right. All right.
I think that's a great poster. Carson City unicorn, yeah, rainbows.
All right, let's take up the last matter on the, on the board agenda. This is 26 Charlie. This is potential amendment to the land use map and master, the master plan to re-designate 112 acres from industrial and mixed-use residential to, from, from industrial to mixed-use residential. I just wanted to say that right. Okay. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a PowerPoint, but we'll see if we need it. We'll go forward first. Again, this is a request to amend the master plan. The board supervisor has the authority to amend the master plan and Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board. The subject property is in the eastern portal, Virginia and Truckee Railroad gateway specific plan area, which I'll call the VNT SPA, shorter. The purpose of the SPA is to provide for cohesive development within the area, to create a gateway into Carson City, to protect economic development opportunities along the highway corridor, to protect visual resources associated with the VNT Railroad, and to encourage public and private partnerships to facilitate economic development in this area. Policy 1.5 of the VNT SPA states the land use designation of the property in the vicinity of Draco Way, east of the VNT Railroad alignment, shall be changed by Carson City from industrial to mixed-use commercial and/or mixed-use residential upon removal of the old landfill identified on the site or with approved engineering controls in accordance with NDEP standards upon development of the property. By way of background, the site was designated as industrial because of the condition of the landfill. So it was sort of a placeholder. The landfill had some issues, so they designated industrial so that those issues could be addressed. There was a lot of discussion in advance of designating it industrial about designating it for a mixed-use commercial or a mixed-use residential, thus policy 1.5. The controls referenced in policy 1.5 are being, are being pursued. You have a letter in your, in your packet from NDEP which addresses the remedial action plan, and that's been approved by NDEP with comments. I did get an inquiry about the stormwater management plan and that has not been submitted to NDEP. They expect it this month. They gave, they gave the applicant an extension on that. Given this request, the requested designation is consistent with policy 1.5 and the Planning Commission was able to make all four of the required findings, the Planning Commission did requ, did recommend approval. Having said that, the Planning Commission talked for a while. They talked about compatibility of a residential area with the neighboring industrial areas. You have Mr. Harrison's letter in your packet and they also received Mr. Harrison's letter. There was discussion about mixed-use commercial versus mixed-use residential because policy 1.5 states both of them. The Planning Commission did not have the benefit of the pages of the master plan that I put in your packets that describe very specifically mixed-use residential versus mixed-use commercial. I will just highlight that mixed, in mixed-use commercial, the residential uses are 10% to 50% of the land area. In the mixed-use residential, complementary uses such as retail office and live-work spaces are 10% to 30% of the total land area. So you have mixed use in both scenarios, but in one, it's, it's predominantly commercial, the other, it's predominantly residential. The applicant is seeking the mixed-use residential and the Planning Commission did make the argument that for the non-residential uses to be successful, you needed to have the residential base there. The Planning Commission also discussed whether or not it made sense to put residential in what's a seemingly fairly remote part of the city, and they were concerned about the lack of access to various, I don't want to say resources, I'm not thinking my word right now, but just shopping, parks, things like that. So, but ultimately, they were able to make the required findings for the request by a vote of seven to one. As part of that discussion also, and particularly with respect to compatibility, I made the, I made the comment to them, and I'll make it to you, that because this request is for mixed-use residential as opposed to a straight residential, I think there's an opportunity to sort of arrange your land uses so that the land uses, particularly the non-residential land uses, are a de facto buffer between the residential and the industrial. Had this been straight residential, I'm not sure I could make that finding. In fact, I doubt I would. Also, our next step is going to be a zoning map amendment. As part of the zoning map amendment, the Planning Commission and the board will have to make a finding that the proposed amendment provides for land uses compatible with existing adjacent land uses and will not have a detrimental impact on other properties in the vicinity. So I think right now we have a request for a land use designation that can be compatible with the neighboring land uses and it is 100% consistent with policy 1.5. I think when the zoning comes forward, the Planning Commission and the board, I suspect, will be continuing to look for that compatibility because the findings are going to tell you to. And clearly, when you have industrial uses nearby residential, you want, you don't want to create a situation for a problem. So with that, the Planning Commission did make the findings by a vote of seven to one and have recommended approval of the master plan amendment. Chris Baker from Manhurt is present and he's representing the applicant. Thank you.
The staff recommendation is what?
Yes, the staff was able to make the fourth finding.
All right. Got a couple of questions up here. Brad and Karen.
Hope, I've got a couple of questions. One is water quality in that area, because you know, we just dealt with the whole issue with the homeowners and their wells on that Deer Run area, and this is just up the hill from that. And so I am concerned about that. And two, you know, ongoing, we're looking at a new trash hauler and all the rest of that. I understand that developments have to pencil landwise. My concern is that going forward, we do something that is compatible with what's already, already out there, which is the landfill, and other types of uses that, that could glean from recycling and things of that nature and create products. So I want to make sure, and I'm looking at Chris, that what we're doing and looking at this allows some usage in that capacity going forward. I want to be thinking into the future because all these developments take a while to get going and not be looking in a vacuum. So those are my two questions, water quality and that.
Okay. And actually, in talking to Mr. Friend over NDEP, he's being very thorough, and that stormwater plan is pending. And he, so I'm kind of counting on NDEP to be a lead on this, just to be honest with you. Having said that, what's come before the Planning Commission has been a master plan amendment. It's not a development project, although in fairness, we do have a conceptual plan pending that the staff will be sitting with the applicant on the 20th to look at. I'm going to just walk through the four findings briefly with you. I did this with the Planning Commission as well to kind of let you know our thinking. But having said that, I think your, your point's a good one, and that's kind of where the Planning Commission was. The Planning Commission kept moving forward, saying, but wait, when we get development and we're at a master plan. For the master plan amendment, we have four findings, consistency with the master plan. Finding 1.5 couldn't be clearer. It says we're going to modify it when they have, have addressed the landfill situation. Granted, they haven't fully addressed it. There are conditions. Compatible land use. They're going with the mixed use, not straight residential. I think there's an opportunity for compatibility. A change of conditions. What's the change of conditions? The change of conditions is NDEP has issued a letter regarding the remediation plan essentially, granted with conditions. And desired pattern of growth. Per the city's own master plan, this should be designated for mixed-use residential or mixed-use commercial upon the applicant working with NDEP to resolve the, the environmental issues associated with that landfill, and they seem to be very close on that. So that's why the findings for the master plan can be made. In terms of the environmental issues you're identifying, I think those will be things I would anticipate the staff will be looking at closely, as well as the Planning Commission and the board, when a tentative map comes in, because we specifically have that finding concerning environmental compliance. And the plans are routed to the state agencies, water quality, and, and D E P for review.
Regarding Karen's question, I think the difference between the two areas, Deer Run versus this, is that that's all wells. And this area, I don't believe, I mean, there's, there's no infrastructure in this area right now, no water sewer that's existing, but I wouldn't anticipate that wells would be allowed under a mixed-use residential zoning or, or land use, that there'd be a requirement on, on the development, that it would have to be municipal water and sewer.
The engineering comments on the master plan amendment state that the sewer main studies for this area must analyze the capacity of the lift station, and they have to make upgrades, so that would imply they would go on sewer as opposed to going with septic. And given the density shown on this conceptual plan, that again, staff will sit with the applicant on the 20th to look at, they couldn't possibly go with wells.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is that the density, the residential density wouldn't allow it, and the commercial certainly isn't going to allow it. Okay? So I think that's the difference, Karen. Next, the fire department comments about access. It talks about improving roads and access points. And again, in the past, when we've had developments come in front of us in the urban interface, the rural interface? Yeah, wooey, wooey. The issue has been that there hasn't really been the ability to get multiple access points into those areas, therefore, we haven't been overly positive on approving development in those areas. This is a separate situation where the land, although it's rolling and there is some slope, it's generally more flat down in the valley, and there are access points that could be constructed. So I think that we can get around that, and that would come in front of, of planning and be a development standard that would have to be conditioned at that time, that they'd have to have adequate access points for traffic and for fire. So I think we get around that, and that's different from what we're used to seeing in a development like this. There's also on, on page 10, it talks about retention basins and LID landscaping. This is something else that Karen and I have been working on for quite a while to start incorporating LID, which is low-impact development for landscaping in developments moving forward. And although we can't make that a requirement, it's good to see that that is coming forward in, in the, in the new plans that are submitted, because it reduces the water usage, it incorporates more natural landscaping materials and plants, so that we start treating our home like we actually live in a desert rather than in a tropical forest. Well, if you've seen my yard, you'd see I'm the biggest defender. Then on the letter from, from Teo, I appreciate that we can use planning to create buffers in mixed use, but I would also request that we add a condition that requires a disclosure to any properties that are sold as part of this development that disclose that they are downwind of an existing industrial area and that noise and odors are present. Therefore, they're not going to have the ability to complain about that or file a complaint about that in the future because they were made aware of that prior to closing on, on a property. So I would make that recommendation as well, and that's worked really well for the, for the farmland disclosure. There's some other disclosures where, you know, once, like if you move in downwind of a dairy farm and nobody told you about it, you know, that's one thing. But if you were told about that before you closed on the property, I don't think you have the right to complain about it later. So I think that would be helpful down the road to reduce complaints.
Where do you make that disclosure in the actual documents, Brad?
It would have to be as part of the sale contract documents. So we can, I don't know if we can make that a condition or how we would try to address that, or if we would just get a commitment from the developer to do that. But it certainly is going to help the developer.
Right now, we're looking at a master plan amendment, so as you, as you referenced, now's not that time. At the time of tentative map, which again, will come before the board, that may, that could be something that gets incorporated into the conditions of the tentative map that mandates the recording of that document. So all, so you record it on the parent track and then the sub, the children, if you will, lots will then carry that, that recorded document as a disclosure document.
I agree that I'm being, I'm a little ahead of where we need to be, but on the other hand, I think that if I'm giving direction today, then we're all on the same page with this and know where we want to go.
Chris Baker with Manhurt Consulting for the record. That was actually something that was stated on the record at the Planning Commission. They, again, were a little, a little ahead of the game. They were more worried about individual uses and zoning and buffering between existing industrial and potential future residential uses. And we discussed disclosure statements attached to title, which is something we completely anticipate if, if a tentative map is ever approved.
Supervisor Barrett has a question, but while you're there, let me just ask a follow-on question here. Would you go through the analysis you used to decide to make determinations whether this was mixed-use residential or mixed-use industrial, commercial or?
I touched on that a little bit at the Planning Commission. Again, I wasn't, I wasn't part of the discussions that staff had at the time prior to the 2006 update that kind of earmarked one of those two as the best alternatives. Being familiar with the mixed-use standards and understanding that commercial needs residential to support itself, to me, it was an obvious choice. The mixed-use residential would help support those commercial uses. If you did have a commercial-driven area out in this gateway with no adjacent rooftops, as you know, Mr. Mayor, we have a lot of industrial parcels. Not many of those are filled, actually, until you get closer to the airport. Then you have a lot of open space and recreational areas. It would be a little bit of a drive to, in, honestly, in the wrong direction to commercial uses. So for us, it made most sense to have- So for us, it made most sense to have an influence of, or an introduction of residential rooftops to support future commercial uses.
Well, not complaining, Mr. Mayor, but the mayor just stole my thunder. I was going to ask about, that's all I'll ask staff regarding what's your view of the better part of being mixed-use rather than just residential?
If the question's mixed-use versus residential, clearly this, this property should be mixed-use given the adjacent uses and the opportunity you'll have to create land use compatibility by having a mixture of uses. I think the mayor's question was mixed-use residential versus mixed-use commercial. And as I mentioned, you know, the mixed-use commercial is 10% to 50% of the land areas, up to 10% to 50% can be residential. That's a pretty significant amount of residential. On the mixed-use residential, we're looking at 10% to 30% of the total land area being retail, office, or live workspaces, which is pretty significant as well. Staff was flexible on this point because the condition, Policy 1.5, offered both up. And so I can make the findings with either one and staff didn't, will rely on the applicant to do their market analysis and identify what, what will be successful. But when it comes to master plan consistency and compatibility with land use, staff is comfortable with both. When it comes to zoning map amendment, we'll be looking very closely at land use compatibility. And when it comes to the development plan, we'll be looking for consistency with these percentages from the master plan.
Brad?
I spent actually quite a bit of time looking at the underlying parameters for both of these zonings. And I think it's not just a matter of how much residential versus how much commercial should be built there, but it's also the type of commercial. This is all low-profile neighborhood commercial, not high-rise or big-box commercial. And when you get into neighborhood business or neighborhood commercial, you have to have immediately adjacent residential to support that. So I can tell you in that particular area, there, I don't believe that there's any way that you could build 50% of that land out as commercial and have it be sustainable. It just wouldn't happen. It would fail. It's not a primarily commercial area. It should be designed as neighborhood commercial, which fits into the mixed-use residential and not into the mixed-use commercial. So after spending a couple hours looking at this, because initially I thought it should be mixed-use commercial, and the more I looked at it, you know, my conclusion is that mixed-use commercial would not be sustainable in this area and that it is appropriately changed to mixed-use residential.
Karen?
What about schools? You're a ways away from everything and the bus system, all the rest of it is non-existent out in that area. So has there been any consideration with regards to that whole thought process in terms of development going forward? And has anyone talked to the school district? Of course, they're going to balk initially, but I just need your feedback on that.
I actually did meet with Mark Kornick and Mark Johnson regarding this specific project and we reviewed the master plan amendment as well as the conceptual plan. And I'll be honest with you, they don't know the answer today. They're like, oh, that's, you know, the very things you're saying were sore their thoughts, but definitely have put that on the schools radar.
John?
Well, I wasn't going to do this, but opening that can of worms gets me back to something I've thumped on before. And I don't at all blame people for coming with potential projects based on a master plan amendment, but I still would like the thought to be embedded in everyone's mind. Eventually, we're going to have to do an overview, master plan. And the schools are part of that and the whole community is part of that. So I'm just putting in another plug for looking at the master plan, community-wide, intensively rather than just year by year, piecemeal.
Okay. All right. Other comments from the board? Public comment? Anybody? Wow. All right. Somebody want to try a motion? Go.
I move to approve an amendment to the land use map of the master plan to re-designate 112.69 acres of land from industrial to mixed-use residential located in the eastern portal, Virginia and Truckee Railroad gateway specific plan areas, south of Astro Drive, accessory parcel number 008-521-54-55-89-90, 008-522-16-17-18, 008-531-59-N-60, based on the findings contained in the staff report to the planning commission.
Here's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, four to one. Did you get it? We're not, is it up there? I don't, there it is. Okay. John, did you get yours?
Yep.
All right. All right. Okay. Well, now on concluding public comment. Anybody? Isn't this Sunshine Week? National Sunshine Week for the news?
Well, if it is, what's the overcast about?
I thought I read that, that this is-
I think you're right.
Annual Sunshine Week.
I would like to say before we quit that it's really a joy to work with this board as the newest guy. I want to say that because we're really taking off the things that are, not just because they're important to me, but they are important to me. And that's things like the Al Boldrick Theater and the trails and all the rest of us. We're making the quality of life in this community the kind of thing that will attract people and visitors. And I, I think everybody up here who preceded me on this board and preceding boards, we're part of that. So I'm in a thank you mode today and I just thank you all.
All right. That's a good concluding public comment. I like that. All right. Anybody else? Anybody? All right. If not, unless there's rejection, we will stand adjourned.